Karen?
Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Thursday, August 24th, 2023, meeting of the Historic Preservation Architecture Review Board. We'll open the meeting by saying a pledge allegiance to the flag. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, thank you. So Judith, I understand that you're joining us via Zoom.
Uh, yeah, can you see me?
We can, yes.
Okay.
Hi.
Can you see my beautiful island?
What do you know?
No, where are you?
Oh, yeah, in the background.
Is that real or are you faking it?
No, that's my real island.
Oh, wonderful.
Okay, very nice.
Maine, are you in Maine?
Yes. I wish, I wish it was my island.
That's wonderful. Alright, so we'll, we'll get going. I'd like to receive a motion to approve the minutes of July 27th meeting. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. So now we're going to open the continued public hearing. I think I need a motion to open the public hearing. I guess I'll, your second? Fine, Megan's second. All in favor? Alright, there we go, thank you. Okay, so 154 Redwood.
I just requested a German.
Oh, you could tell this at before. Okay, I I will do, I will accept a motion to adjourn this to sometime in the future. They should have called you. I hope you didn't drive from Connecticut, right? Okay. Anyway.
For the record, the next meeting is September 14th.
Okay.
I made a motion to adjourn September 14th.
I'll make that motion?
I'll second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. So now, we're gonna close that public hearing.
We're not gonna close it, we're just gonna adjourn it.
We're adjourning it? Okay, thank you. Do I need a motion to open a new public hearing? Okay. I'd like a motion to open the new public hearing.
Motion?
I'll second it.
9 Lincoln Street.
For 9 Lincoln Street. Is there anyone here to represent 9 Lincoln Street?
I'll second it.
Yep.
Okay.
I'm here.
Oh, that is beautiful, Judy. So, please identify yourself and talk to us about the 154 Redwood.
9 Lincoln.
Lincoln. Oh, this is Lincoln, I'm sorry, we're over there. Alright, please talk to us about Lincoln Street, 9 Lincoln Street.
Hi, I'm Nick Pappas, I'm the property owner. We're looking to build a seven-bedroom, six-and-a-half-bathroom home. About thirty-six hundred square feet.
Hi, I'm, hi, I'm Jamie Porz. And we're just looking, we're requesting a certificate of appropriateness for the proposed demolition of the existing residence and construction of a new two-story resident. A front-covered porch, attached two-car garage.
Okay.
Thirty-six hundred?
Thirty-six hundred square feet.
Okay, so this is us here.
Bear with me, guys, I've never done anything like this.
Don't worry.
What, Zoom or build us? No questions?
So You can share with me, Bethany. So
We have a landscape plan, a plot plan, and we submitted the architectural drawings.
You wanna take us a little bit through the project and tell us about it?
Uh, yes, it's a, there is a ranch on the property now, it's very old.
Can you show exposed pictures or?
Um, I probably can, it's a little tricky on Zoom, I don't have my computer with us, with me right now, but I could try to pull up a picture, but it's a, um, it's a brick, one level. It's, it's in very rough shape.
There was something in the folder I saw.
Right.
I think there's something here.
Well, this is
Proposed. It's, it's a one-story ranch, yeah.
One story, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
This is subject to the historic, this is overland stuff.
That's another
Yeah. The demolition of houses in the overlay.
This is, uh, this is not a historic house.
Right.
Right.
No. No.
Well, well.
It's not.
But it's in the sands, historic overlay, right?
It's, it's an R overlay district, right, HBVC.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Russ HBVC, and I would assume that it falls into the category of one of the inventory houses in that district. Safe assumption.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know, I mean, if this were built in the nineteen, late seventies, it wouldn't, but I believe the so-called period of significance for the National Register District, which was then adopted as this historic overlay copied, you know, the
The
Inventory of resources, et cetera, et cetera, accepted them as written in the National Register form, and I think the cutoff date in that was up to the early seventies. So I think you would want to know more about this particular building, just because it's subject to your, a special review, this may be the first time.
Has it been completed, this overview in the district?
Yeah, the overlay was, it was adopted in February.
October.
October.
Twenty-two.
October twenty-two, yeah. And with it came
Just standards.
Standards of review.
Well, yes, but additional standards, like you can only have three accessory structures, they're in the code, I can pull it up.
Okay.
But it didn't, it didn't create the same level of reviews and historic, historic house.
Well, that's, that's why I'm questioning it.
I don't know if it's right, but the information on the internet says the house was built in nineteen sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven.
Yeah.
So it would fall within the, because the state parameters are quite extensive, I think they come up into the early seventies. Would be the inventory of buildings that defined the National Register project, which was then adopted district overlay.
And, and did our building inspector be aware of this?
Well, he's
So he, I, I'm just surprised that he would forward it to us as a demolition. It's a way out of these things, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, there's no prohibition on demolition.
Yeah, well, that's, that's why I'm, that's what I'm saying, that
Right.
If, if this wasn't part of whatever, it wouldn't be before us to have this happen.
So the regulations, standards state that the maximum GFA in the overlay district shall be calculated according to code nine four one oh. And, and in no case shall it see four thousand square feet, regardless of the size of the lots. Since the road within the HBVC overlay district, the lot will be through the sidewalks, the previous trackways are prohibited. Properties within the HBVC overlay district will have no more than three accessory buildings or structures, and then, and then it talks about enforcement. Oh, the violation will be sufficient to warrant the institution of investigation by the village.
So, so Zach, the way I think the people who drafted the overlay district polls will perceive this
Yeah.
Is, is that they didn't want to acknowledge, didn't intend to acknowledge that eligible houses just as eligible hous, houses that could be eligible outside of the district aren't, aren't limited in terms of demolition. They felt the same way here. So
I just wanted, it's relevant.
No, it is relevant, because this is one of the first we're really going through on that.
Right.
And it's important that we and the audience understand what we're talking about, so it's very important. So in, in this instance
So what is the limit of this size, I think?
Four thousand.
And this is thirty-six.
This is thirty-six. Okay. And of course, you don't have any accessory structures here, so okay. Um so gee, you're not even asking for a pool. Usually we have an architect or somebody who's knowledgeable about the plans, just gonna take us through for our benefit and that of the public. Either one of you kind of able to do that for us?
Yeah, um, I can try.
Okay.
Do you want to maybe shift over a little bit? We're, we're getting like half of your face. There you go.
Okay.
As better, now I can see both of you.
I just texted my architect, just so you know, to see if he could jump on the call, um, he's at a meeting, but he said he would be standing by if we had any questions, so I'll do my best, but then I guess if we, if I can get him to jump on, that would be.
So we have another option, if you want, we can table it until the end of the meeting and see if he wants to join us after.
At the end of the meeting? Let's see what he comes back with, but let's see, maybe I can answer your questions or.
Okay, so in the rendering here, it looks like the center is shingles, and then the two facades on the left and the right under the Yeah, but on the plans where it shows the front elevation on page A6, it doesn't show that on board.
Yeah, so on the original plans, he did have everything with an architectural shingle when he, I guess after he submitted those plans, he needed to send in like a 3D rendering, so we had a conversation just about design detail and we discussed doing a board and batten in the front there. So that, I think that was why that was submitted, like as a secondary thing.
Do you, do you wanna start and just make your presentation so that we can all stay on the same page at the same time and go through this?
I mean, I, I don't have much prepared, I, as far as a presentation goes, I just basically, the, if you want me to go through the 3D rendering here, it's, um, it's gonna be cedar siding. It's in a, in a gray-beige color, it's gonna be a very, hold on, let me get my notes. So, um, we're doing cedar side, side. In the picture there in that rendering, you'll see there's a metal roof in the front.
The same size.
There's some way you could hold up. Oh, sorry. Oh, okay. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Sure. So, um, it's a very modern, clean design, very common of what's happening out in that area. It's, this house is not being built in a historic district, so it's very clean lines, white windows, the, the the window option we're doing is a four-grid over one, which is very, a very popular.
Do you feel comfortable, like, starting with your plans?
Sure.
I don't think she is.
She's going over this.
I don't know if, but I think we should see, this is what's gonna be okay.
I know.
Right?
Yeah.
So, if you're, if you think, if you think you're ready to, to share with, using the plans, let's
Yeah.
Let's do that. If not, then we should go to the next meeting.
Okay, so my architect will jump on this Zoom, he just, he just said, he's gonna, he's gonna jump in now, so do you wanna do that, or do you wanna?
Yes, yes. No, he's ready. I just have to send him a link.
So he has to jump on.
He's not on, no, he's not on.
Has he finished, has he finished his meeting yet?
He's in the car, he's gonna pull over, he said, so.
I, I wonder if we shouldn't just wait till next week, next meeting.
Um, I, I would prefer if we could do it today, um, but if, if you wanna, like, push us to the back of the meeting, that would be.
There are, there are some things we've noticed, like already, like the rendering doesn't match the plans, so that's kind of a, because they sign off on the plans. So that's, that could be, that's kind of a big deal.
So for instance, the windows don't match, the same thing that's here in the plans, it's not the same window. So Four over one on the plans.
Is it all right if our, if our, the builder of the project talks to you guys for a second?
Hi, I just wanted to introduce myself, hi, first, thank you very much for inviting us. So I just got off the phone with, with the architect, he was on, I believe, the Southern State, he's pulled over now, so if you could just give him a few moments just to say whatever it is that, or answer any questions, and then if you'd like to table it, then that's fine, but I feel kinda bad because I've stopped him, he's pulling over on the side right now, Jamie is now alerting him to whatever's necessary to join this, this Zoom meeting. But also, we also wanted you to know that, I'm the builder, and I, we're not, we are not adamant about any of these little design or decor type issues, so as far as the materials and stuff, we're willing to abide by any wishes of the, of the board.
Well, I, I thank you for that, but let me just make this comment. You know, we're volunteers, and, and we have people who are waiting to also make presentations.
I understand.
And so my thought is, uh, this is not a surprise to you in terms of schedule of the meeting date, so my thought is, uh, we should table this.
Okay.
But is, does he have his plans, can he ask, can, can he answer specific questions? Can he walk us through it? Yeah. Alright, so put them on, let's ask him some questions.
Okay, alrighty.
Let's have him start tell us about this project.
Okay, so we'll be getting him on.
A six, the front elevation.
The elevation, A six.
That's back here, it's on the side, and there's a flanted
This is under that slant.
Yes.
So that's the garage.
Okay, you know what, we're twenty minutes in here, I, I think we're just gonna table it till he's ready.
Why don't we do this public hearing?
Yeah, let's do some of the other.
And then go back to them.
Time, he's taking enough time.
So I'll entertain a motion to table this till later in the meeting.
You want to wait till later in the meeting then, not, not next?
Well, we'll, we'll give him till later in the meeting, if he has his, his materials.
Yeah, well, second call.
Second call, okay.
So we'll deal with it today, but
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so.
So, who's next on there?
Thank you.
On the hit list here. The action house, fifteen White House Lane.
Thanks, yeah. Okay. It says new residence, hotel, and swimming pool.
Oh, you're right.
There's two on my house.
Right. So when you're ready, please approach the podium, please, and identify yourself, please.
My name is Bealana Franciscia, I'm the architect on the project. The project addresses fifteen White House Lane, it's a vacant piece of property that's located about a hundred seventy-seven feet south of Hampton Street. The size of the lot is twenty-one thousand two hundred square feet. The property width at the street is a hundred feet and goes back approximately two hundred thirteen square feet. We are proposing a single-family two-story house, the square footage that's being proposed is three thousand four hundred and seventy square feet. We're also proposing a pool and a hot tub. So, uh, the proposed building does need all the zone setbacks at the high restrictions. Do you want me to go through the floor plans, or do you want me to just go through?
We're more focused on the exterior than that.
Yeah, the elevation. That's great.
Right? Your, your sheet number two, okay? Excuse me?
Oh, yes.
We got you. We'll get pretty pictures. It's fun.
Our porch is a standard ceiling, metal roof, and the color of the post is gray. The windows are four hundred, Anderson four hundred series windows, and it's a mixture of double-digit windows and lining windows, and they're white. The, uh, the front steps at the porch are blue stone, and the risers are stone. Let's see. The trim is five-quarter by four, and the head trim will also be a small case crown. The siding for the house is cedar perfection shingles, and it's a six-inch closure. The chimney is a stucco finish.
Could you turn it toward the camera for a moment?
What is right?
Then I will take care of it. That way.
Thank you, thank you, I, yeah.
The front door we're proposing is a vertical plan, front door. I think that cover of the main finishes on the house.
Okay, I, I think, is this, do I remember you making, it might be the other White House Lane, but you did a, a study of neighboring houses, did you, was that your presentation? Yes. Can I see this?
The character of the neighborhood. I think we're far keeping with the characters, but that's not how we would do that.
In here, right? Well, wherever the study is.
I mean, yes.
This is the photos of, of the neighboring houses I'm talking about.
Yeah, it's going.
Yeah.
You mean, are we used, is this what it?
No, but it's probably
Yeah, well, this is the yard.
This isn't, I really started.
Right, so the You're in this panel, you guys seen the teeth of the neighboring houses, and I think, I think we're all thinking the same thing, yeah. Have you seen that, Megan? You have an extra?
Could I just look at it quickly, while they're looking?
And, and we need to show it to Judith, you didn't see the picture.
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious, because it's a very large structure.
Those, that's the neighboring.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that one that Megan handed you is a little, no, it's the same, okay. So, so, okay. Does anyone wanna start making comments on this? Do you wanna take us through the whole, why don't you take us through the whole exterior?
Is there anything more you want to say or do? Is there anything more that you wanna present about the?
About the front facade?
Garage is a side facing, not front facing.
That's good. Lot of glass.
So
Separate.
Yeah.
It's attached, but it's attached to the small vestibule.
So my thought is this, if, if you look at your own, your, your neighbors, their style is kind of traditional. Although, and I'm really, I think some of the, my colleagues up here might agree, really focused on the window size, and, and the floor-to-ceiling windows seem extremely large. And I, I understand about light near, or light at least. What's your motivation to have, you know, in, in the bedrooms and all the rooms to have these sort of windows?
Well, the main, the areas that really pour the, pour the ceiling are in the stairwell, they're not in the bedrooms, bedrooms are just degress, three-foot windows, five, five-foot floor, that's what's basically in the bedrooms, the only windows that really are large are the ones in the stairwell.
So, so this, this to the left is all stairwell?
This is what she's talking about, I think, right?
She's saying this.
Oh, this whole thing is a stairwell?
That's a stair tower?
Okay.
Okay.
So that's, that's yours.
Yep.
But regardless of the internal use, which is not your concern.
Right.
It results in a wall
Of glass.
Which is an aesthetic issue.
The client just came to me with a photo of this one, that was the one thing that he loved, so it's gonna be hard for you to choose the size of the building.
I, I understand, but so our charge is, is, from the ARB side, is to kind of try to maintain a village aesthetic, right? And so, as I was explaining to a group of people last year, we're the village's HOA. So, um I don't know, how do the other members feel about this? You think that this is a lot of glass?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it the southern, it's a western exposure, that glass?
Yes, it's west. It's off west side.
Which is the front of the house, correct?
Yes.
So it's a sunset view?
If you hang out on the stairs.
A glass of wine and some cheese and you're okay.
Seed is all built in.
Is there a way to do this with, to still get the amount of light that you'd like, but these are, they're nine windows total, right, just for that stairwell? You know, as opposed to doing maybe, um
Six.
The six are different, you know, a, a different configuration, I mean, it's, it's nine window, nine big windows. Um, I'm just Um, I'm just wondering if there's a way to reconfigure it so that you would still get the light.
Well, the light.
But not have separate windows, maybe three big windows or three, I don't know, I mean.
Or change the whole.
Look of it.
Look of it, and these windows, they really from the base, the whole concept was having this ray of light going all the way down, because this stair of mine's all the way down into the basement. So if I change that, it changes the total dynamic of this whole design, so.
So let's say, if this, I, I'm not sure if the term is appropriate, if you did a bay front, which the center window, and we're not supposed to do this, but the center window was closer to the street, the other two were kind of angled, so it wouldn't be a wall of glass, you'd see less glass. That's a thought, you'd still probably get the same amount of light.
I mean, overall size, what's, this is a new build, um, a lot, we're gonna be clearing trees, it's a wooded area. And then, this is a rather massive grand facade overall.
Clearing trees?
Trees. For the lot?
Not much.
And a new build?
Not much, it's not much.
Used to be, used to be woods there, now?
No, it's clear, that is clear.
Oh, that was a shame. That was a shame.
I have a thought, see, just from your historical perspective.
Uh-uh.
Usually, windows, historically, in you're building a new house, but when windows accompany a staircase, you, you see that from the outside. In other words, they step up because they are an exterior clue to the fact that they're lighting the stairwell. So you wouldn't have three rows because the stairs aren't flat, the stairs are rising inside. But the windows outside are in three horizontal rows.
Well, the stairs design in such a way that the landing is a structural horizontal piece.
Uh-huh.
That's exactly, you know, everything's.
At each of the, so each row of windows is lighting a landing?
There is, well, the landing, you know, the stair obviously is back, so it's in the front where that horizontal then is, it's giving that horizontal structure.
I'm not saying that the windows on the facade need to align with the steps in the room. All I'm saying is that typically, when windows are lighting an interior staircase, they are stepped up and it echoes the concept of something rising inside. Whereas the other windows are lighting rooms that are either downstairs or upstairs, not in the middle. So that, I'm not saying that we need to have an alignment of them, but I'm thinking it might break up the aesthetic of these three rows of windows, which occupy the entire wall in that area and feel a little excessive aesthetically. So if they could be rearranged in that way, it might work for the program and it might lessen the amount of window a bit, a little bit.
So we're, we're not, you know, we're not.
You don't want to design.
We don't want to design the property, we, we're not against walls of glass, but they're usually on the private side, they're usually on the rear side of, of a piece of property, not at the entrance side. And, and so, um, it's, it's just a very different look for, for the village, and I can't think of a similar property right now.
This property will be well shielded, the owner owns the property next to her also, and it's very well landscaped. And it's for her personal, private, you know, oasis and I, I can go back and talk to her about these windows, but this is particularly what she focused in on. So, I understand, I, I I think this has a lot of of the elements and characters that you do see in South Harbor, the giggles, the twelve-on-eleven pitch, you know, there's certain things.
This house is facing the neighboring property, not the street?
But this is a property, resident across the street, residence across the street.
Yes.
Yes, that's what you meant, huh?
I guess.
Yeah.
She owns the property across the street.
No, she owns the adjoining lot.
To the right.
Okay. So, driving down the street, this is imposing.
And the, you know, this is a, this is a, if I'm right on this, let me just think. It's a west facade.
But it's also set back, you have, you pull in, it looks like, and there's a parking is right there, and then the house sits back from the bar gate.
Yes. I don't think Southern houses are supposed.
Not glass.
I, I just, I, the, the issue is, the issue is the glass is, is the.
You know, this is a little bit more, I would say that, um, the glass, yeah, there's a lot of glass, but the actual proportions of people compared to some of these other houses, I feel a more proportion to that this year.
I'd like to see the overall house smaller.
It, it does fit the, with the code as, as now, May, right? So.
Yeah, the code allows, but I'm saying that the Village of Side Harbor and historically, houses aren't this large. Maybe houses are being built this large, but as a member of the board, I believe the village homes that are being built should not um, overtake the landscape of our, our environment.
These are the houses that are indirectly into the stability of this house that's being built.
Yeah.
The proportions of these houses, you know, are set proportion.
I didn't have a say in any of those houses.
I mean, you know, it sits out almost.
I think the main focus is about the windows. And if you're, if you'd like to go back to your
client.
Client, yes, and, and speak about that and, and what we've, what's been said here. I think that uh, it would be, it would be probably a good day.
I can talk to her. Like I said, that was the most important element of this house for her. So what will you accept? I mean, I can reduce the sizes themselves, but it's definitely gonna change the whole look. I mean, I can have six windows, but the, instead of these, they will be huge, with six huge windows instead of nine windows. I can divide it up into two, but these windows are still gonna be good.
What if you made the rest of the design of the house very traditional? And to have this one, like, modern aspect?
It's kind of what it is, right?
Client, that, you know, this is what the client wants, I'm trying to make her happy, I understand about the windows. But this is this particular element that she fell in love with. And that she saw somewhere else and fell in love with. So for me to go back there and tell her she can't have this, gonna be a big deal for her.
O- okay, so.
You, you also have to hear from the public, don't forget.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
So, so, but the point, the point is, and we will hear from the public in a second. The point is that she's brought into a community that uses zoning and, and, and architecture review to protect the character of the neighborhoods that she's falling in love with. Okay, so, well, we respect that, and she's owns a lot of property. Uh, we still have to do our mission, and people sometimes do have to compromise. Uh, if we let everybody follow their vision, there would be some god-awful architectural, I'm not saying that this is the case here, but there should be some god-awful architecture and some things that would, would change the character of the neighborhood.
I have just a quick question.
Sure.
I have a quick question regarding the landscaping. Um, I see the entrance here for the car to enter into this property, but on each side you have, it looks like four large trees, and then is that a hedge across the front?
There's an existing hedge, now that hedge is existing.
And how, how tall is that hedge? Just out of curiosity, I mean, and the reason why I'm asking is, does that provide, like, coverage?
It definitely does, it's a very private. So you see, this, this is the process.
So where that basketball?
Yes.
Basketball net is, is that? Oh, yes.
You go in, you don't even see that.
You don't see it, you don't see it.
You don't even see it.
It's gotta be twelve, it's gotta be.
Yeah, but landscaping is not the solution to it.
No, I'm just asking about the coverage and privacy that came up with the neighbors.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, so we'd be interested to hear if, if, if there's some opportunity to modify this. Um, it's not, it's not unusual that we reach a, a meeting of the minds. And, and unless anybody has any other questions or comments. Public, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Anybody in the public wants to comment? Any hands up or anything?
I need both of them.
Okay.
Hi, I, I haven't looked at the plans, I'm not commenting about anything, but unfortunately, we can't either presenter, so can she please either move closer to the microphone or something? Would that be okay?
Thank you.
So we should hold up the plans here, we, you know, we should just use the easel again.
All right.
Do you have a question?
Well, she can't comment because she can't see what we're talking about.
She can't hear, she can't hear the presenter.
Have you seen the diagrams, have you seen the plans?
No, I haven't, uh, I actually have a ha, uh, an empty lot on Lighthouse Lane, I didn't realize there was another one, frankly. But I haven't looked at the plan, so I, I'm not in a position to comment, I, I just couldn't hear the presenter, however.
I think the public has wrote to see that. Was it A?
I would, I would question whether they have gone around to the neighbors and asked them what they think about this house. If, do the neighbors know that this is going to go up?
It's a public hearing, so they will.
Okay.
Show this to the camera?
Yeah, please.
I just had the board up. They can see it.
Eileen?
Yes.
Can you see this?
Yes, I can, thank you. Um, it does look rather large compared to other houses on Lighthouse Lane. I actually had to look at the tax map and I don't see the address of fifteen Lighthouse Lane.
This is two, this is not fifteen, this is two.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, okay.
Yeah, fifteen Lighthouse Lane, yes. I didn't see it on our tax map in Chatfield Hill. But I will, you know, take a, an additional look, I appreciate the concern and share the concern of the board about the windows and the size of it. I haven't looked at the landscaping or anything like that, if it's a cleared lot already, that's another story. But I, as I said, I'm reluctant to, other than agreeing with what the board has said thus far, I'm reluctant to really add any concrete feedbacks.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to comment from the public? Judith, do you want to make any comments?
No, I agree with everything that everyone has been saying about the wall of glass. And the size.
So if, if you go back to, to your client, whatever you can thought, you know, when you talk with her, the wall of glass is, is the reveal that needs to be changed. And, and it, whether you make it three, you, larger windows, I don't think that's the answer. Would anyone else agree or disagree with me?
Yeah, we agree with that.
So, you know, for this board to for it to.
So basically, I hope you just, and just change all those windows, is what you're telling me?
I would, I, I just think, yeah, reduce a little bit, yes.
I'd also say the massing, that's the entire.
Give us some particulars.
Um. I mean, what, what should I say? The, are we talking about the, maybe the height, maybe the double?
Double. Right, the double roofs.
Double roofs, um, it just, it feels, um.
You just have to remember too, that this is brand, that this is a new, this is brand new.
Yeah, so, I don't want it to be a big side harbor house.
It's just hard because I, I understand your opinion about, always, which is always what, you know, you speak about is, is size and things like that. Um, but I just want us to, you know, it's always a balance.
Right. It's not Gen Lane.
Not what we, uh, maybe want. You have, we have to balance it out and we have to, you know, make sure it's within the code and.
I do have a inventory of it, but I haven't submitted it, so can I still show it to you?
Sure.
So this is your.
Yeah. That kind of really shows the.
That really shows the windows.
Yeah, it really shows the windows.
To the front.
Yeah.
Yes.
You say that's a rendering, that's the color that you plan to paint the house also?
Quite.
Yeah. Yes.
That's.
You know what I'm finding very odd these days are these garages that are built in the front yard? This is a new trend.
Yeah.
And I suppose this is occasioned by the configuration of a lot in part, but I mean, it's a vacant piece of property, so arguably anything could be designed and placed in relationship. I'm just finding, seeing this in elevation is interesting. But having to look out of your front window at your garage is, is a new, it's kind of a new idea.
Almost of the living.
It's the glorification of the garage, as if that is like the.
Well, the main living is in the back of the house.
Is that what it's about?
The main.
So we're all living in the backyard and what happens out in the front yard is?
No, that's not true.
Okay.
The property is only a hundred feet, the width of it is only.
Why, that's what I was saying, so this is occasioned by this, the lot size and the configuration. It just seems very strange to me to be building garages in front yards. Uh, just like historically speaking, and we have that perspective generally.
Right.
I mean, usually the garage is like in the back corner and the driveway sort of goes up along the property line and it gets to the garage eventually. Now, I guess we're living in the backyard, so we put the garage in the front.
It has been happening though, if you notice, right?
It may not make it okay.
No, I know, but if you walk around the village, I'm saying, that if you walk around the village, you see it more and more.
Uh-huh.
How, like, how? How has that been happening?
Well, it's been approved.
It's been approved, uh, zone, uh.
I'm just pointing it out.
We have not approved, in, in my memory, a lot of garages out front.
There's, excuse me, there's one on John Street where it's just a garage and then off in the distance is the house.
Yes.
Also Bay Street.
Is it, is that relatively new, Judith?
Yeah, um, it's a, it's a redo of a house.
Right.
It's the second house that you see on John Street and you drive up and there's a big garage and you barely in the backseat.
Yeah, yeah.
So going forward, do we want to allow this?
That's the way it was.
Well, well, the. Well, I'll briefly on this.
Maybe we swing the garage around?
I think to, to Zach's point, having the garage protrude or extend towards the street even, even brings the mass closer into the neighborhood, right? So if it was on the backside or the side of the house, it, it would be less daunting, this is, that rendering is that, that rendering is, is.
I would suggest that you come back and see what you can come up with.
Yeah.
The garage being in the front, I can go down plenty of streets in South Harbor and take pictures of new builds that have a garage in the front.
I know.
And we shouldn't be allowing it.
Something new, then I understand that, I will try to accommodate it, but I'm trying to make the client. make the client happy and make the store happy, so I need to have more of a direction. You wanted to change the windows and change basically the whole house.
Windows in the garage.
Windows, the garage, and, and maybe the, the color might be less imposing if it's not white, if it's something less dramatic. If it has more of a blend into the background, it doesn't stand out. All of these things are very aesthetic, obviously, and this is subjective. We, I at least, you know, I acknowledge that, but at the same time, this is, the render really makes it feel like this is in your face, right? So if it, if it's, if it's a little less austere, is that the way, what's the word I'm looking for?
Is it white?
That's, that's the word I'm looking for.
Yes.
Yeah.
White, it's very bright white, is that the idea?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's, yes, we'll show you, hold on.
Oh my goodness. That would certainly help if it were not bright white and blinding, it's blinding.
You know, this, so that's a thought, and then you're gonna have these windows and then you're gonna have them obscured anyway by this, by this tall shit, this green giant or anything, it's very confusing.
No, they're not obscured because they're set back on the strata, it's on the side, it's not sitting in front of these windows, but that's okay. So just to get a clear idea here, you want the windows reduced and you don't want the garage in the front?
I would, yes, yes. Would not like the garage in the front.
No, that's, that's the other.
That might help with the massing of it.
Eileen Rosenberg has the hand up again.
Hello, Eileen.
Eileen?
I, I, again, I'm sorry I haven't had a chance to look at the plans and I will do so. But can you clarify again the size of that house? Because just looking at this picture, it looks rather enormous compared to the houses in Chatfield Hill. What is the square footage of that house?
470 square feet, and that includes the garage.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
3,700, I'm sorry, 3,470 square feet.
Okay, thank you. I think we need to make a motion.
Yeah. Does anyone from the public have any comments or questions? Judith, you have any thoughts?
I've expressed mine. Garage wall of glass, blinding white.
Anybody here from the KRB that wants to make any more comments or thoughts or suggestions?
I think we've.
I think we've done it.
Covered.
Okay. So.
Motion to table?
Well, yeah, I, I think we, our understanding is that you're gonna go back, you're gonna talk to your client. You're gonna see if there's some modifications. So I think what we'll do is make a motion to continue the public hearing till the next meeting. Okay? And keep you on the calendar. Okay?
September 14th.
September 14th, okay.
Can I get a second to that motion?
Second.
All in favor? Alright, thank you. Next is 66 Hillside Drive. Good evening, please identify yourself, sir.
And this is Greg Guffenbauer. We're here to present to you 66 Hillside Drive East. Which is a 3125 square foot house, losses of existing. That's called a derelict house now. We might have demolished. We're also making application for a one-car garage. A small pool house and a small suite home. A transitional cable roof. Rendered in a made that lighthouse gray. Black window frame and a sequestrian series, black windows with a series of black doors. And a flat, a C roof. Reach out this 316 inches cable roof, we're pretty much allowed, the garage is 15 feet, 15 feet is allowed, the pool house is 35 feet dating to there are 15 feet allowed. House is conforming to zoning setbacks. Area block coverage, et cetera, et cetera. What I need to tell you is a first floor, floor primary with a orange, a public space that is the bedroom, bathroom, kitchen. But room entrance, bathroom, reversal as well, free on speed, on second floor, a walkout basement with a two.
10, it's in the, it's in the back, it's it's in the back, number 10.
Might as well just leave it where it is. I, I stopped it now, but there's a rush. Yeah.
Let me just see, 10 is the front, this is the front elevation, right? Sheet 10?
Yes.
I guess it's the back.
Is that stucco?
Stucco?
Yes, that's got a stucco base, it's a part of it, and under the, the sub scene porch there.
Right.
So when did you do these plans? Remember? Yeah.
Just prior to filing.
So, so you, you know you're in the HBBC overlay district? So we, we took a look at, at the plans and our, our building inspector is not here. And there's issues regarding, I think, the number of auxiliary structures you have on the property.
So you're allowed three.
You are.
You're counting four. No?
A garage, pool, and pool house.
Okay, so.
Yeah, the real estate agent in his excitement posted as a 4,500 square foot house, which is true, because there is a finished basement, but the basement square footage does not count under FAR.
Do you see that?
It's a 3125 square foot house.
Yeah, you see that confirmed. So the basement doesn't count? Well, cellar doesn't count, a basement would count, so it's really how it's measured on the plans. And they don't necessarily have to attribute the plans in measure.
Or percentage.
Alright.
Exactly.
Just a grade, yeah.
Billy.
You can say whatever.
But we got some questions.
But this is, this is consistent with a lot of the new architecture.
So we need to wait for him to return.
So would the board or the public like to make any comments? Has the public probably hasn't seen this either?
They were notified, so they can come in and review it. So that's how.
No, I mean, I mean our audience here.
We're 32 neighbors.
On Zoom with her hand up, Lisa.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi. Uh, thank you. So I'm president of the South Harbor Hills Improvement Association. And I do have a, a few questions about the proposed demolition of the former Muriel Cunningham House to a new build. And first question is respecting the structures. It was our understanding that the HBBC overlay district only permits three structures total, including the primary residence.
Three accessory structures, Lisa. Sorry.
Speaking?
Liz Vale.
This, the lawyer.
It specifically says shall have no more than three accessory buildings or structures. So it's not three total, it's not, you've got a principal structure and then three accessory structures. That's what the regulation states. It's 300-ish, 8.16E.
I see, okay.
Yes.
Also, I did want clarification around the square footage, especially since the new build will have a walkout basement?
We're gonna get that from the building inspector. Yep.
We're, yeah, we, we just, we're talking about it.
Okay. And then since the, the garage is intended to be a separate structure detached from the residence, I gather the building and structure will be looking at the required distance, I think it's a minimum of 10 feet.
I think it's.
The garage and the main residence, and then ensuring that there's appropriate setback to the adjacent property.
Yeah. Plan is fully conforming zoning dimensions, garage is 15 feet, the small pool house is 10 feet.
So glad that your building inspector will be reviewing the plans. That's all I have for now.
I've got several houses in the area and they all have finished basements that did not count towards the GFA. Generally never does in any of the villages or towns that are here. It is a percentage of more than half the basements exposed, it becomes, I don't know whether it's the cellar versus the basement, the definition change, does become a story. But in this case, we conform to the definition of, so it's not counted towards yet.
Okay, so do we have any comments?
So houses that look this way. It's not my stylistic preference. I would just rather see something more traditional or more modern, not just like weird blend. But I don't know how to enforce that, so.
I think on the window subject, which we just debated extensively in that other proposal, I think this kind of addresses that. In other words, it's, it's not walls of windows.
Right.
You know, they're kind of, they're large, but there aren't all that many. And they're discreetly, and in a very modern way distributed, almost asymmetrically. So I think it's, in terms of its massing, it's somewhat comparable to that on the design, but not in the other way. But it, it, it doesn't present that aesthetic, that wall of windows.
I, I would agree.
Which I think was especially concerning in that.
Well, it actually, I mean, it has the same wall of windows at the back, not to the front.
So we're not yet sharing that at the neighborhood.
What are the slits in the top?
Judith, is Judith around? I'd like her to see these renderings, because I know she's at least gonna wanna take a look at the landscaping.
Judith, are you on?
Okay, great. Yeah, my, my computer went off for a while, so I missed the last 10 minutes.
You're not missing it.
Okay. This is the Hillside Drive?
Yes.
Yeah.
Alright.
It's, it's the public meeting, Judith, and we know that they're coming back.
Okay.
Thank you. So Judith, did you have any comments?
Um, no, I, my only comment is that I just saw that, what you just held up just now, I didn't hear any of the other, I missed like 10 minutes just now. But my reaction to it is something like, it's, it's, again, seems large and very I don't know, large.
So Mr. Cook, would you restate the, the dimensions of the house for her?
It's a 3125 square feet above grade on two stories. It's a 31 feet. 31 feet, six inches to the maximum height of the ridge, where 35 feet is allowed.
Mm-hmm.
Garage is 13 feet tall, the pool house is 13 feet, eight inches tall, where 15 feet is allowed.
So you're within?
We're within all dimensional regulations.
35 feet is allowed, I thought we topped 27.
So Lisa has another question, and then we have someone in the audience.
Okay. So the lady in the audience, let's, let's address her first.
So it's, you want them to come up? It's our, do I have to? This is four feet below the regulated height?
Uh, just about.
And is there a rooftop there?
No rooftop yet.
No, and what is your name? Eileen Curry, 78 Hillside Drive East.
Ms. Curry, have you seen the, have you seen the renderings?
I have, just posted on the property. I have, um, just posted on the property. Not in need of.
Okay, um.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry. And, and Lisa? Oh, hi, Judith.
I had moved.
Yeah, seeing all parts, parts of your house. It's very nice.
My main camp.
Okay. It, it, I think Lisa was up, up to, uh, up.
Yes, I did have an additional question. Um, will the, the signage in front of the house be corrected respecting the square footage because I think it was advertised for forty five hundred square feet plus thirteen hundred square foot basement.
I believe they've already corrected that.
Because there was, just a couple of weeks ago, there was just a sheet of paper um, across the sign to block what the square footage was.
Because somebody took this sheet of paper down. Um, I'll make sure it gets changed.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Um. So I, I, I guess you have our comments. Uh, not too much. In, in terms of landscaping, I'd like to see more detail on, on that when you come back.
Uh, do we, do we have to come back for the building inspector? Can we get a conditional approval based on him saying, say, it conforms?
No, we want to look at the landscaping. We're hoping that you'll do some native plants.
Uh, basically doing landscaping is gonna be as represented such as grasses, oxwoods, some ornamental trees, and obviously the typical privacy, um, evergreen around the property for shared privacy labors in our home.
Landscaper is, he stands landscape design. They're very familiar and with past stuff.
Is he?
ARB for other projects and say, well, they're very respectful.
Is there a landscape plan? So we need one.
Well, that's, that's part of our checklist, so.
So we need one.
We'd like you to bring one back.
Okay.
And, and I'm, I'm gonna repeat myself. We'd like some native plants. We'd like some pollinators. We'd like some things that are going to uh, enhance the environment that's been degraded by lot clearing and other things. Uh, of course, dark sky.
Yeah.
But we want to see if we can help provide environments and habitats for, for our native.
Great.
Okay.
So you think the building inspector will see this before the next year? It's, it's been in front of him for two months.
I think so. So just, it's just about, I, Chris Havitz refused it to go in front of the board. This question was just brought up today and he's not here to put his weight on it. So he's away, so we're not able to get in touch with him. So we don't want.
Isn't that also ARB, but the building inspector doesn't pass, he fails? This, this is supposed to be an aesthetic.
We're gonna see each other again, Mr. Cook. I, I think it's reasonable for us to ask you for the thirty days for the building inspector. As, 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 excuse me. As was said, these questions came in today. When I looked at the plans, I saw a representation of one structure, I think was twenty two hundred feet footprint and it was two levels. So I came up with in excess of the four thousand square foot maximum. So I had my own notes to look at this. So, um, we're gonna have the building inspector. The president of the Owners Association is on the line. She's identified herself. She has a responsibility to the Owners Association. She wrote a letter to this organization. And so in respect to her and in respect to the Owners Association, we're going to make sure everything is in full compliance. You stated that it is.
Yeah.
So it's just a matter of thirty days.
Well, I agree that you're entitled to a landscape plan, so we have the thirty days to deal with that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Please get it. It's, it's, you, you're gonna give us a week to review it before you.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you.
Yes, I would mention, I'm gonna make a motion that we can. Do we need to continue? Okay.
You don't need to close table until September fourteenth, a motion and a second.
Almost. I'll make that motion to table.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So who's here for seventy Glover Street? Anthony, how are you?
To close the, or no, keep it open.
Let's put this away. This is Anthony. Oh, that's not still my Anthony.
Forget it.
Anthony, Bourbon Glass, sixty eighth, uh, Union Street, Site Harbor. So I just wanted to give you a quick update as where we are with this. Um, kind of building on some feedback from the last, uh, meeting. So up here, as requested, is the existing elevation, the spacing Long Island Avenue. This is what we're coming back to you with tonight, and I think it's still relevant to show you what we originally proposed on the bottom is what was approved by the ZBA and what we originally presented to ARB. So, uh, what we've done here programmatically is we've moved the master bedroom to the ground floor. Uh, so what that really led us to is really greatly, and that was suggestions that you folks had, uh, was really reduce the size of what we need, of the space, space we need on the, on the, um, second floor. So the idea here was to basically take the form, mass and size of the, uh, of the existing front house, moving it towards the very back of the, of the property, rotating it ninety degrees. Uh, and if the guy gives you with that kind of gable look facing, uh, Long Island Avenue is, uh, makes that a little more softer than would be if it was gable. So between these two elements, you really just have a one-story, um, structure, kind of similar to that structure that's there now. Uh, really the same relationship with the bridge to the existing, um, dormer.
Hmm.
Uh, so that kind of going in the direction we're going here now stylistically, it was better to just kind of keep it all consistent material, uh, shingles rather than switching to the board and batten to the original, um, scheme.
Hmm.
Um, so, yeah, um, I'll show you the other elevations.
I would agree because it gets broken up, you know, in the middle there without. Yeah, that's good.
Could you hold, Anthony, could you hold that up to the camera?
So it's the middle one that he's bringing to us now.
There's, there's a camera, Anthony.
Over here.
It's, it's that camera right there.
Can you see?
Um, no.
No, no, you go the wrong way. It's, you center yourself between the two screens.
He's holding on to a.
There you go. No? Okay.
Yeah, there you go.
That'll get closer.
Yeah.
Can you get closer? Yeah.
About it.
Um, can you hold it horizontal?
It's, it's angled.
There we go. That's better. Yep. We're giving you a workout tonight.
Yeah.
That's your shoulder.
So, so Judith, the, the top rendering is original. It's existence?
Yeah.
The, the, the bottom res- rendering is what has been proposed and discussed in the past.
Right.
And the one in the center or diagram, I should say, the one in the center is what's being proposed now, the modified.
Hmm. Well, I see you, um, taking a lot of what we said into consideration. That's great. Okay, thank, thank you. I don't want to break your arm.
Anthony, can I ask you a question? So that piece that's on the back.
Hmm.
Um, this framing around it is.
So that says shed dormer. Let me, uh, show you the rear elevation. You can get a better idea of what.
Is that a roof? Is that a second story?
Yeah, it is. Yeah. So it'd be like, uh, so the current front part of the house here.
Right, I see.
Yeah, has this little cute little bedroom in it. You know, it's not, you know, it's just a little bedroom. It's got a tiny bathroom. And the idea is the back will be kind of the duplicate of that, just rotated ninety degrees.
Got it.
Um, once we move that program of master bedroom down to the first floor, we could obviously make that bedroom in the back much taller. You know, it doesn't need a, a big closet or a big bathroom. But anyway, so this is the, the rear elevation. So what you're saying here is that, uh, that roof line of the back, back piece with the shed dormer is coming off of either that.
Can you see?
Yeah.
Um, and then it drops down in the middle.
It's so interesting.
Yeah, between that. And what you, I don't know how well you can see it here, but the dotted lines here are the proof of the in between, middle, middle part there.
Yeah. Yeah, I see. Okay.
Yep.
And, uh, yeah, this is the side facing the neighbors. So kind of a similar, similar account.
Where, I'm just curious, wh- where does your neighbor's house? How does that align with approximately?
Right, okay.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I don't have the exact dimensions of the neighbor, but that's sure, the name bulk of it is there.
So that.
And then she's got a little garage.
So which street is, which, which street is which?
Okay, so, so this is Glover Street. This is, uh, Long Island Avenue. So the, the first elevation that I showed you, the long one is from Long Island Avenue.
Uh-huh.
It's actually at an angle, you know, uh, when you're looking at it from Long Island Avenue, but, uh, whereas it's straight from Glover Street.
So, so theoretically, the middle of the roof is lower. Does that improve the neighbor's view?
Well, it, it's certainly going to greatly reduce the amount of, uh, side plane protrusion that we had originally asked for.
Right.
And I think she had some concerns about, uh, shadow on, on her property, which would be a non-issue now. Um, so I may hope that it's helpful.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does anyone have their hand up, uh, in terms of the, the viewing public?
This isn't a public, yeah.
Well, it's not a public hearing. All right. Well, so I guess we don't have to listen to it. Okay. Any comments from the, uh,
I, I think you did a really good job of addressing the concerns that we had from the last meeting. I mean, it's, it's really much more proportionate now and it, it flows a little bit better, in my opinion.
Yeah, I, I think this is so smart. Um, you know, the problem being you had two front yards and and so you took the facade and you put it on the back. And I love that the center of it is, you know, just one story and lower and God, what an improvement from the last rendering you showed us. Um, and I think the, is it shingles or clappards?
Uh, shingle. It'll be clappard on the front, the, the existing front facade, and the rest will be shingles.
Okay.
No, that's traditional. Sag claw.
What? Yeah, so I think the shingle is much better than the board and batten. And I'm wondering, should, should the facade stay as a shingle, maybe?
Uh, it's shingle currently. I mean, a lot of times that we've been clappard originally and then they changed to shingle.
Right.
I mean.
So what is it? It's shingled now?
Yeah, shingled now.
This is the front.
From the existing front.
Facing Glover.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you, and you're going for clappers.
Why?
Yeah. Just that.
Right, pass the refrigerator on the right.
Well, I, I just, as, as a historical.
Yeah.
Do you know, do you have a sense of what the date is of the existing shingle that's on the front?
Um, you know, I would say.
Because we can, we could figure that out pretty quickly. I'm just saying, if it appears to be original shingle, then saving it is, is an objective of this, you know, whether you like it or not. It's not the aesthetic. It is what it is. If it appears to have been renewed and replaced, then it's a new siding.
Is that when the previous owners renovated the building in the eighties, they probably reshingled the whole house at that time. They look like they're new shingles that are kind of ending the end of their lifespan.
So do you see the nails that are holding them on?
I haven't really looked at them.
Well, that would tell you.
All right.
If the nails are concealed, they're new. If they're exposed, they're all, okay.
There you go.
We'll take a look at that.
But even if they're not historic, would, would shingles look better than clappards?
Well, you do see the combination, as Judy just pointed out. You do see a clapper used on the front, sometimes beaded to make it a little more important looking.
Yeah.
And then shingled on the sides. You do get that combination. I'm just saying technically, if it's been renewed anyway, then I think you'll have a greater latitude in terms of what you want to do.
Is there more or less? Was he saying that?
Well, I think one thing that I think is that, um, you know, unless it's, as you say, you know, if they're
That's why.
Their original shingles. But if they're not, I think one thing about doing the clappard in the front, given that the house has two front facades, that gives that Glover Street facade maybe a little bit more prominence, you know, a little more formality to it, which I think would be kind of appropriate because you really do see both sides of the house.
Yeah, I, I'd be in favor of clappard on the front, um, unless, unless the shingles are original, which case they should be kept. But otherwise, it's so, it's, it's a thing that happens inside. Clappard on the front, shingles on the side, fine.
Are there any pictures in the file?
Photographs. Are there any photographs?
We don't have.
I bet it's on the hat in that book. I bet it's in your book. I bet it's in the book.
It's in the book.
The book at home.
Yeah, we're trying to figure this out now, not later. Anyway. Oh, Google. Go, go, Google mapping. You can zero in.
Hey.
What are these devices for unless we?
I'm thinking of the book that you're working on now, but.
That's as big as it gets. I think they're new.
They were newer.
I think they're new.
We're going. Yeah, they should have a wider, what are they, like five, five and a half? Yeah, they're.
Yes.
Okay, so they're not nineteenth century. They're, they're definitely. We don't know when they were replaced, but they're not original. They should be
Yeah.
A, a wider exposure, like eight inches.
Hmm.
And the nails should be prominently holding them down.
Hmm.
You know, so this is definitely, I would guess from that picture that you're looking at a new, newer siding, so the clappards.
Okay.
Tommy, I think you have the freedom to.
Make your choice.
Any other comments?
Make your choice.
How, how should we proceed here with, with this? I mean.
So.
I'm not sure what the question.
Combine the, you know, get this set up to date, um, finalized to.
Yes.
Yes, yes, we'd like your final plans to, to reflect your final plans. Uh, and, and so between now and the time you, you produce them, it'd be really nice if you check on what whether these are historic shingles or just newer. Okay.
Probably not.
We can.
They're probably, I could check. So, so, um, yeah, so that's what we'd like. This is the final set of plans. We like landscaping plans, so we can.
Great, but you, general direction is good here, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great job, Anthony.
Uh, due to scheduling issues, uh, conflicts, I probably won't be here for September. It'll probably have to be October.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Anthony, I, I just want to thank you. You, you, you always find a way for us to reconciliation.
Yes.
So, uh, I thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Steve, there's something more historic on, so I'm gonna.
You're not having fun?
I'm having a ball. I, I, I don't have any opinion about swimming pools. I'm not up to eating a swimming pool person.
Oh.
I'll make a motion, uh, to table seventy Glover.
Okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Judith. So now, who's representing, uh, sixty Joel's Lane? Is anybody here for sixty Joel's Lane? Uh, okay, I, I, um, let's table sixty Joel's Lane. And, uh, is there anyone here for sixty eight Madison Street?
That's adjourned also.
That's adjourned also. Okay. So.
I need a motion to table all of those.
Okay.
Motion to table sixty Joel's Lane and sixty eight Madison Street.
I'll second that. All in favor? Uh.
Aye.
Okay. So thirty Lighthouse Lane, I think that they're not here either. Is anybody here representing thirty Lighthouse Lane? Okay. I suggest that we, uh, adjourn thirty Lighthouse Lane. That's my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We have quickly found our way down to Mr. Oden. Mr. Oden?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Oh, I I stood that. This is Anthony's.
You just need to say who you are, though.
So.
Say who you are.
I'm Walter Oden, owner of forty six Terry Drive. And I am here requesting a certificate of approval just for this unit of property at forty six Terry and address section of S- S- for small eleven uh point nine by twenty point eight point four uh to include fencing hedge, electronic equipment, pool equipment. We sought from the ZBA a ten-foot front yard relief. This is a corner property, point one nine acres. We looked everywhere on this property and put this in the front yard on Terry side, which was the building inspected, so we don't even think about it. Uh so we're in the rear yard, we're replacing a twenty-five by twenty-five uh block patio. We're taking that out and putting this smaller uh pool in. So in terms of the curb area surface, we're giving about a hundred thirty-nine square feet back. And so if you look at the plans, you can see we already have hedging on the Meredith side of the property. We're gonna extend that hedging behind and going in between my property and Pierce property lot twenty. So the hedging will, uh they're boxwoods and they'll go all the way around the pool, so you don't see it. This pool is also about six feet up off the street, so you don't, you can't even see that there's a pool back there anyway. And then we're gonna put gate, gating around it to, for protection, for, you know, safety. Any questions?
When I heard, when I read about this application, I said, where? Uh, you found a spot.
We found a spot.
Right.
We found a spot and it was approved, so uh and 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 as you see, it stays contiguous with the house.
But you don't, you you won't see this at all from the street. You know, there's no.
You you can't see the pa- patio back there now, except for if you look from the neighbor's house, but you won't even be able to do that after we put the hedging. Uh, we'll protect that and we protect us.
Anymore? Are there any questions, Frankie?
Yeah, I think we, I think we're good.
Judith, you're good with this? Oh, did you see?
It sounds fine to me, assuming that it's all, you know, fenced and that.
The the fence, I I, what is the fencing?
It is, it is the gate, the, the, um metal fence gate.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
But you don't even see the fence because.
It's a small pool.
Yeah.
All right, I I'll take a motion to approve the application. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Teach, you've got some architects who can teach some. Okay.
It's our only approval.
I know, I know.
And who says we're easygoing, board? So. So who's here to represent thirty-two Meredith Avenue?
I am. Good evening.
Good evening.
Board, uh my name is Tate Orton. I'm the architect representing the certain name of the property at thirty-two Meredith. And do you have, I brought Brett out, so do you? So you're simply going to review.
Twenty-third, this is not the twenty-fourth.
This house, this is a little house uh that was uh taken original structure from the early sixties that we renovated and uh repurposed by the board. Uh, they do the house renovation, basically, that we're getting a safe pool. The house is still, it's still developed. Now you would like to have a a plunge pool and it's a sort of open pool house, I think. The pool is going to have a goal, except that it's a regulation uh pool house, it's two hundred square feet. Uh, the pool is roughly fourteen by twenty-three feet. We are staying within ability coverage with the box. Yeah, twenty-five has doubling the site and um so we have even cypress around it forever. There's existing four-foot fence on the side and rear yard on line. Cedar fence on the kind of fill between the existing fence and the house with the gate. Um, we're doing hydrangeas to bring some color and interest to the backyard, kind of separate in the existing trees that are shortening um and the levers. Uh, no trees are one of the old roots in this proposal. The aesthetic is to match the existing house. So the existing house is a dark gray uh size uh painted dark gray. We'll do that again with the pool house. Uh, it's a as well, you imagine that the house is single pitch. And uh there's no doors uh facing pool side, it's an open structure, uh but there are three windows facing the wall. It's an in-ground, then I pool. Um and then we have permeable pavers that are setting up footpaths and then small place to hang out terrace, guess the car that went in and I think that's it. I mean, I don't have a rendering for this project, their thing, uh the pool house, but here's given this kind of a B B of the 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 original house. The stack is of the same, uh the pitch is actually kind of similar as well.
Oh, boy.
Uh, thank you. Uh.
That's the existing house. That was, I believe you may recall, this project is from twenty twenty-one. Um, so we took this little house and kind of uh brought it up to a more kind of contemporary uh finish. Uh, and we're doing the full house and pool, so the full house is sort of matching the aesthetic of this house. And then I don't know if you can read the site plan, but
Yeah.
Pool house is kind of here and the pool is some it creates an L shape in the backyard and we're putting around the river uh fence line and then uh put again some uh forever summer hydrangeas, which you kind of do light mix uh covered in there to bring light. And then the wow, I just have the elevation representing it, but get a sense of it. It's just a simple symmetrical box.
Okay, thank you.
Any comments or questions?
I'm good with it.
Judith, how are you?
I think it's fine. I think it's great.
Okay.
I also like what you did with the house back when you did that.
Yes, I agree.
Yes.
I love the design.
So, does someone want to make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion.
All second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any votes? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right.
Worth wait, right?
That's, oh, we have to sign this, right? Judith and I have to sign this.
Go back to.
Oh, yes, what what happened to our our couple?
They're on.
They're on, are they on? Okay.
Oh, we're here.
But do you have your architect with you?
We do.
Wonderful.
Yes.
So while we do go through this transition, um welcome, sir.
How you doing?
You're still driving, huh?
I'm still driving, but I'm pouring over. Hold on a second. Okay, I'm on, I'm I'm all yours.
Okay. So.
Okay, I apologize.
No, that's all right. We're gonna get the plans in a second and then you can kind of take it, take us through, give us a flavor for your intent.
Okay.
And uh what you want to do. So this is, we're recalling one fifty-four Redwood Grove, is that right?
No, nine.
No?
Nine, nine Lincoln.
I'm sorry.
Yes. Nine Lincoln.
Yes.
Okay. So I understand this is a seven-bedroom, six-and-a-half-bath, thirty-six-hundred-square-foot home.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so one of the questions that we had was this, this is a bit of a different design intent or or uh between the rendering and the plans in terms of the facade materials in the front, so can you tell which is which?
Okay, so I I think what yeah, so I think what happened is, as we, I I did the original set of drawings, as we were going through the rendering and and, you know, making some decisions on uh siding and color, uh I think the intent was to sort of break up uh some of the mass uh with with different textures, so it wasn't so monolithic. Uh, so that's why I believe the rendering shows some some board and batten uh along with the the cedar shingles. Um, and then the standing, you know, the standing seam roof on the covered porch. Again, you know, I wanted to sort of break the mass up just so it wasn't so monolithic. Uh, but you know, we'll certainly follow the discretion of the board if, you know, the board feels uh we're getting too busy. Um, yeah.
Okay, so you're saying this cedar shingles I see are on the side of the house?
Yes.
In the center, in the front.
In the center, right.
Boy, that on both hands.
Yeah, but now this, okay, so that's a standing seam roof. I kind of thought that was a railing for.
Oh, yeah, that that's standing seam, yeah, that that'll be a standing seam metal.
Okay.
Okay.
Um.
It's two different materials. This is standing seam and this is
regular, yes, for the roof and that side right piece is not standing seam. Asphalt, yeah.
Yeah, so the the balance of the roof would be an asphalt cedar, uh asphalt cedar shingle.
Yes, well, that, that uh, well, would be my right-hand side that is, it's set back a little bit?
It is set back a little, yes.
Yeah. And and it, so is the other side, are they equal?
Hmm, um, you know, I apologize, I, you know, because I I had a conflict, I don't have my phone with me. Um, again, yeah, we we were trying to get a little, you know, we didn't want this to be so flat, so I was sort of playing with, you know, pulling some of the sides out, pushing the the center of uh back. Um, you know, just to get a little depth, get a, get a little, um, you know, transition in the in the elevation.
Your question is this, at the same point of this, is that what your question?
Yes.
Okay.
I I believe I, I think I've got the left and the right pretty much at the same same plane, yes.
I've got, I've got this is the ground floor. We need to look at the second floor, hold on.
Yeah, look at the second floor, exactly.
There's a difference, but it's not much. Right, this is that. And then this is that.
Okay.
It's a, let's see what is that.
Is is there a rendering that I could see?
Oh, yes.
There you go, perfect. Yep, good.
So this is, this is wider?
Oh, yeah.
Two windows?
Oh, yeah.
This is, this is two, 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 and this, and this is, I I can't get a dimension of it here. I should be able to.
And this is definitely wider.
Yeah. So this is.
Nick, if you can keep that rendering up, that that'd be helpful.
When you see the, she can't hold it up.
So what they're asking if, yeah, the the one side is bigger.
Oh, yeah, this, okay, so the right side, looking at the rendering, the right side is slightly larger of a gable than than the left side, yes.
Okay. And how about the height of the two gables? Are they the same? Like, when you look at it it, when you look at the actual, the rendering looks like they are, but then when you look at the plan.
They they, they are slightly, uh, they're they're not as tall as the ridge, uh, the main ridge. Uh, the main ridge is, I believe, about thirty, about thirty-three feet. And the both those gables are lower than the than the main ridge. I just felt that it was gonna be, you know, too overwhelming uh if we had those two gables, the same height of this main ridge, so I did bring those down.
They look, uh, they look taller. They look taller.
Yeah. It it's just the perspective, it's uh but but they actually die, the the ridges die in, or just slightly older than the main ridge.
Is there something we can look at that shows that?
Uh, the 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 architectural elevation would would be more of a true perspective of those ridge heights.
Yeah.
All right.
On the plans.
How's the dimension on the plan?
Right, so top of ridge.
The rendering is always when the sneak and I look different than.
Yeah, you.
Very often that happens.
It's twenty-eight, ten. And it doesn't give us the dimension on the other side. It does.
I'm sorry, it does not.
Okay. But it looks lower.
It is a little lower.
Yeah, it, right, so this, alright, because this is kind of.
Yeah. Definitely is a difference. The the roof line comes right into it and this one is very much above it.
Right.
How much did you say above? Uh, how many feet difference between the, the, on the?
Uh, I I'm I'm gonna guess about maybe two feet.
Okay, it's interesting. So once again, the rendering reflects the facade treatment.
Yes.
Okay. So we don't have
The landscape.
Right. We don't have a landscaping plan.
Yeah, I I do, I do have a landscaping plan in the package there. I I wanted to keep the landscape sort of at a minimal, if you really go through the neighborhood. Uh, most of the homes are not really overly landscaped. I do have a row of abreviate on the right-hand side that sort of shields the uh the driveway area uh from the neighbor. Uh, this is a side entry garage, so I figured we'd shield the neighbor from the garage. We have some planting around the AC units and then just some um you know, more pollination plants and native stuff, uh low stuff in the in the front. And then the trees, all the trees you see in the back, those are natural, those are there already. And we do back up to a heavily wooded parcel of property.
Yes. It's a nature preserve.
Yeah.
We certainly don't want to create, you know, we want to keep sort of that natural foresty look in the back. Uh, we'd like not to put any additional plantings. Uh, we just feel it would sort of conflict with the the natural, you know, backdrop of the property.
Mm-hmm. So in this rendering, there's a hedge, maybe four feet high, that kind of goes along the sides of the driveway to the side of the lot line and then it goes, it looks like at the back edge of the house. But I don't see that on the landscape plan.
Oh, um, it, more, more that it just, when I had the rendering done, um you know, it just wasn't something I guess I requested to be be that accurate. Uh, I figured the landscape plan was gonna dictate.
So that's not really there.
You're not gonna do that.
We are, um, we are gonna follow, well, we we'd like to follow the landscape plan that just showed the.
The plan, not the actual rendering.
No, that's.
Right, that's correct, that's correct, yes.
Is what the, what the plan is, is what we, is what's going to be.
That that's what we're proposing, that's correct, yes.
Kind of like they put
They put whatever, right, okay. Yeah.
But but the question's valid.
It seems like that's the end of the yard, but then in here. It seems like that's the end of the yard, but then in here, it's like, okay, you have all this space.
Right.
Um, so.
So so I asked, I asked the prior applicant. Would you plant any native flowering shrubs or anything?
Uh, certainly, you know, certainly, we we can, we can certainly look at and introduce, um, you know. You know, native native plantings to the property, of course.
And pollinators.
And pollinators, a hundred percent, yes.
That's that's really what we're trying to do. I mean, you're right up, you're right up against a a a wildlife preserve, so.
Yes.
So, but. Still, we'd like some local pollinators, Judith said.
Okay, all right. Absolutely, I'll I'll look, I'll look at that.
Okay.
And since this is such a large, like a maximizing of the house that was originally there. It looks like you're moving the how, where the structure is closer to Lincoln Street.
Slightly, slightly forward, right.
Yeah. Um.
We're trying to keep as much of a backyard as possible. Uh so we we did bring the house, you know, as close to the front yard setback.
And did we discuss how this compares with neighboring houses?
Probably larger.
Okay.
The the block is sort of a coptic, there there's there's a multitude of styles on on that block. Uh but, you know, but the board has to be certainly, you know, comfortable with it.
There there are, Lincoln Street has a variety of houses. Actually, it's it's interesting to get. Some of the earlier ones were at closer to one fourteen. This is where they're dressing like a nine Lincoln.
Yeah.
That the original house was there a long time. Nineteen, what'd they say, nineteen sixty seven?
Yeah. But some of them on the street between one fourteen and then as you go to the water, they get. They 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 have a different mass. And and their lots are slower, smaller, these are pretty large lots. Okay, is there anybody from the public with comment? Judith, do you need to see anything from us?
Uh, I'm I'm, I think I get it, yeah. Um I'm only concerned about how it fits in with the rest of the houses. And also, uh Lincoln, uh as I recall, is uh has a steep hill. Are you near the hill?
We're not, we're not near the hill, no.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're we're more towards the the main street.
The one fourteen, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Once again, anybody from the uh public would like to make a comment on this? Okay. Came back to the ARB, any thoughts and comments?
I I we would, I was just feeling that it's definitely an improvement. I mean, when you go, when you drive on one fourteen on Hampton and look over at that, you can see the brick. I think you can.
I think you're right.
It's pretty.
But this is.
So here's Hampton Street.
Um.
I think this, isn't this?
This is further in.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Come around the bend.
Yeah, you have to come around the bend.
Straight line to that hill and they're right in that little.
All right.
Right. Right.
Valley, which, yeah.
It should be down, it would be so easy, isn't it?
Yeah, a little bit.
Yeah.
Well, you can put your hand down now with your uh.
Aw. It was the two of them, though. They at least could each do one in.
Okay, I don't think we have any questions on this. I mean, I don't have any questions, anybody else?
I don't.
Okay.
I'd like it to be smaller, but that's always my form.
What is the square footage of the house? I don't remember.
It's about thirty six hundred square feet.
Four was a lot.
Okay.
I just think when you're starting with a small ranch and it go, like, it changes the neighborhood a lot, I think.
I'm just amazed at how much property there is. That's why it's happening.
Yeah.
It's a third of the nature.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Big piece.
Look at it.
Yeah. Okay, um, let's call the question. Would anybody like to make a motion? All right, I take your motion, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Nine Lincoln.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So.
Oh, um, yeah, I I can make the motion to approve it.
Okay.
I'd like to.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye. Okay.
And Meg.
Megan.
Dan. Yeah.
Have a great night.
Yes. And with that, Judith, we're gonna say good evening, we're gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to close the meeting.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for being here with us.
Thank you very much.
It's very interesting to see it from an audience point of view.
Oh, you can give us some direction next month.
Well, do do something about the microphone for the people. I can hardly understand what they're saying.
So how's our dress? How's our look in our dress?
Oh, you look, you look great. You were, you were ready for the close up.
You can't understand.
You guys were approved, I don't know if you heard that.
Oh, we did. Thank you very much. Have a great evening. I appreciate your time.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you.